Good evening. The Spring Board of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, and the time is now 7:08 PM. Board members present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Hodges, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Newhouse, and Trustee McDaniel. I'd like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or any electronic devices. Thank you. So at this time, our Board Vice President and Board Equity Committee Lead, Winford Adams Jr., will begin the meeting by reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continue growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. The award-winning Spring Naval JROTC will lead tonight's presentation of colors. Commanding the color guard and carrying the United States flag is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Makaya Marks. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Genesis Caias. The United States Rifle Guard Cadet Commander Aiden Jordan. The Texas Rifle Guard is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Michelle Teliz. And leading the pledges tonight is Cadet Petty Officer First Class I.P. Thompson. The Spring Naval JROTC program is under the direction of Master Chief Mark Clark. So at this time, will everyone please rise in the presentation of colors? [Inaudible] 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 [Applause] Thank you, everyone. So at this time, I'd ask that those present, please quiet. We are in a moment, celebrated a moment. Our next time is the next item for tonight's agenda is our superintendent's remarks, and I will now turn the meeting over to our super proud superintendent, Dr. Lupita Inahosa.
Thank you, President Durant. And at this time, for this meeting, I'd like to take the time to honor our third grade teacher, Ms. Chantavia Riddick, whose life was tragically cut short this weekend. Chantavia, who was a beloved member of our Smith Elementary staff, was named and celebrated as Spring ISD's Rookie Teacher of the Year for the 21-22 school year. She had a deep love for her students and her colleagues at Smith Elementary, many of whom articulated just how sweet, caring, and joyful she was. One of her colleagues said to me just this morning, "She was a ray of sunshine and hope with her bubbly personality that always made everyone smile." We are going to miss her deeply, and I would like for us, at this time, to observe a moment Thank you all, and I ask that we continue to remember and celebrate Ms. Chantavia Riddick and all, all of our Spring ISD teachers who care so deeply for our students, their colleagues, and most importantly, for our district. And today, please take some time to thank and hug a teacher in memory of Ms. Chantavia Riddick. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Durant.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. Next, I'd like to ask any of the trustees who would like to make remarks this evening to do so at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say, we've had a lot of activity in the last couple of weeks, and I just want to remind the community that, and so it was reminded from me and my family, that what we do as board members, it is definitely volunteer, and our financial, there are no financial responsibilities, we don't get paid, but our pay is when we are active in the community and the community responds, and when our scholars excel. So I just want to just advise the community of that. I've had a couple of comments that were made about us as board members and when we show up and how we show up, and I just think that as a, as a community, we need to be reminded that this is an elected position, and the times that we're here till 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning for board meetings, it's time that we're taking away from our families because we really love what we're doing and we're committed to this community. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Also, this week, I had the opportunity for Labor Day to attend the Timberline Labor Day Parade. Thank you so much for the invitation. It was a really nice event, and I'm looking forward to making sure that's on my calendar every year to attend. And also, the Walk for Success was very successful. It was, you know, when we go to those homes and meet those families and talk to those students and to see them come and really react to what we're doing, and, you know, that's success. If we can reach one child, to me, that walk is very successful. And again, that was an event that we got up and were there at 8:00 in the morning to celebrate and to go to homes and reach out to, to kids to try and get them to come back and to learn about all that we have to offer as a school district and also what's in place for them to be successful, for our scholars to be successful. So the Walk for Success, to me, was a success, and I hope my colleagues feel the same way. I believe we had three students that did come over to Momentum High School that's, that registered and will be working towards getting, towards graduating from Spring. So we're excited about that. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Hodges. Anyone else?
I just wanted to mention something that Trustee McDaniel and I attended, and that was the College Excitement Day, College Recruitment Day at Gloria Marshall Elementary. And along with us was the namesake for the school, Gloria Marshall. And I thought the excitement of the students because they do a cheering section for their teachers' institute of graduation, and it is interspersed with messages from the administration, how important it is to attend school every day and to try hard, and I thought it was a wonderful event. And then walking out, I got even more of a, what do I say, a real warm feeling. I met a crossing guard named Brenda, and just talking to her about what she does as a job every day, and then she goes in and volunteers in the school. And here's a retired person who could be sitting at home, you know, doing things that just are for entertainment, and she's out there making sure our students are safe going to school and going home from school, and plus working in the, in that school itself to help them be better learners and helping the kids. I just, my thanks go out to all the crossing guards and all the teachers.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do want to comment and also want to thank my colleagues and the senior leadership team because the last couple of weeks have been a whirlwind. We've been really, really busy. It's been something almost every single day. But I wanted to talk about Saturday. We had the success walk that morning, and then that afternoon, we had a board workshop where we had some really in-depth dialogue and some exercises that we participated in together as a team of eight to take a look at our mission and our vision and to make sure that it's aligned with our strategies and made a little revision, some more to come. But we had a really, one of the things that I found most rewarding is when you, when you go out and you knock on the door to that student that hasn't returned to school, and you have an opportunity to talk with the student and their family. And we had a young man, we were speaking with him, his grandmother was holding my hand and crying and speaking in Spanish, like, I was like, "Help me, Trustee Correa." But, but we were really able to, she was saying, "He's a knucklehead and hard-headed, and thank us for being, thank you for coming." And then when we got back to the school, he was walking in the door to register, you know, and to be, and we had two that we visited that we actually saw come in and register. And as Trustee Hodges indicated, we don't get a monetary reward, but those are, that's the type of reward that you can't buy, you know, to make that kind of impact and change in a child's life. So it's always a great event, and it wasn't just us. We do it across the district at every single campus. So we even had a roll call on video for every single one of our campuses. Everybody's out there hitting the ground, going and looking for our students and saying, "We, we need you, we support you, we care," you know, and, and that's what we are here in Spring ISD. That's what we try to do, and that's the family and the village that it takes to make a difference in a child's life. So thank you for that. Our next item, recognitions. So at this time, I'd like to ask the Board and Dr. Inahosa to join me in the horseshoe.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Inahosa, and everyone here in attendance and watching online. Our first recognition item this evening is a special presentation on behalf of the Texas Police Chiefs Association to the Spring ISD Police Department. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Chief Jeff Burt of the Tomball Police Department for a special presentation.
Good evening, Board President and Board Trustees and Dr. Inahosa. It's an honor to be here. I'm new to, new to Spring ISD visiting, and I just want to say first, I'm so sorry for your tragic loss this weekend. That is absolutely gut-wrenching. And secondly, how dare you have that act before me to follow this, the singing and dancing and honor guard. I can't follow that. They're literally singing all that jazz, and I'm supposed to get up here all 120 pounds and try and convince you of something. All right, but we'll try. But seriously, though, what, what a beautiful performance followed by an absolutely just stunning honor guard. That was so impressive and so crisp and clean and professional, and it just really speaks volumes to a very involved community and a very involved board. So, well done. I am the Chief of Police of Tomball Police Department, and I'm honored to be here this evening and represent the Texas Police Chiefs Association Accreditation Committee. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of over 1,700 police chiefs, I hope we're professionals, throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of quality police services. I'm here this evening to present the Spring ISD Police Department with a certificate of reaccreditation for the continuing, for their continuing to maintain compliance with Texas law enforcement's best practices for the past four years. Several years ago, the TPCA, Texas Police Chiefs, developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. And many of you, we all, there are several professional professions that have accreditation programs, and they are programs of professional excellence and all require proof of compliance with a set of professional standards, and ours is similar. It is a voluntary program where agencies must prove they meet or exceed 173 difficult standards. The standards are based on Texas law, they're based on court decisions, and contemporary best practices as identified by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations, such as importantly, use of force, protection of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, the Constitution, property and evidence management, patrol investigative operations, racial profiling, goes on, just to name a few, very, very important, very, very important topics in law enforcement. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state are now working diligently to meet those requirements. Approximately eight years ago, the Spring ISD Police Department first attained their accredited status with the TPCA, and it was not easy to do. The agency had to, had to conduct a complete audit of all of its policies, procedures, and operations in order to meet these standards. Since that time, your agency has submitted annual reports that were reviewed to ensure the continued standards and provide citizens of Spring ISD with professional effective police service. In July of this year, trained assessors, police chiefs, and command officers from other parts of our state spent two days conducting another rigorous assessment of Spring ISD Police Department. These assessors, we interviewed staff, inspected facilities, operations, we met with field officers, and ensured compliance with all 173 standards. The report was sent to the Accreditation Committee comprised of nine active police chiefs from around the state who reviewed the report and voted to award accredited status once more. The vote was unanimous. So that's amazing. During this process, Spring ISD has once again proven that it meets, no, just it exceeds the best practices for professional law enforcement in Texas. And I, I want to, just, just a couple of numbers that I can leave you with because they are impressive. Over the 20, 2,800 law enforcement agencies in Texas, only 197 agencies have achieved accredited status ever. That's 7% of Texas agencies. But here's the, that's amazing. But here's the clincher, and someone who's, who's not an ISD chief, but I can look at this and say, of those 197, seven belong to ISDs. That's amazing. That, that suggests that you have an absolute eye on professionalism, an absolute eye on commitment to excellence, improvement, and, and I joked earlier about the kids, but it is absolutely about that. This is, what does this mean to you? What is, what should this mean to your district? What should this mean to your community? And it ensures that your Spring ISD is focused, that the men and women who work here, who I've gotten to know over the, over the course of the last couple of years, have a fire in their belly, they're dedicated to their, their profession, they're dedicated to their community, they're dedicated to their kids and what they believe in. And, and that, that speaks volumes. It speaks volumes to all of you and the men and women who wear blue. So it means also that your police department is continually striving for professional excellence. So I would like to call up, if I could, Chief Rodriguez, will you please come forward and to accept my congratulations to you and your team, your excellent work, and accept.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Well done. Very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Very quickly.
Do I have to dance or sing?
No. I just want to say a special thanks tonight to Chief Burt taking his time to come here with us tonight to present this to our police department and to be a leader in Houston area law enforcement. We appreciate you very much, Chief. This is the second such agency that I've been a part of this accreditation process with. I can tell you, I've been around other agencies that don't have this, and they're not any less of agencies, but I really prefer this way. This sets a standard, this sets the excellence mark for law enforcement in the state of Texas. They were doing this before I got here. I'm glad to be, very glad to be part of the team over the past two years, this work to get this reaccreditation, and it is a constant effort over the four years. You just can't show up a week before these chiefs come to our department and say, "We're going to do this." If it won't work, you'll feel miserable. Real quick, I would just like to point out a couple of members of our team. This was an entire team effort across the police department. However, we did have a couple of team members that really focused and were fully party, yes, ma'am. Lieutenant David Borckhardt was the team lead on this. Lieutenant, please come on up. Assisting him was also Corporal Janet Hilaire. Officer Siney Cluess. Officer Cluess was on maternity leave right before we had our accreditation. However, she would still call and check in with me, "Do we have this? Do we have this?" So she's taking care of a new baby and making sure this is done, so I really appreciate that. We also have Officer Jessica Simi with us. Sergeant Jared Morton and Sergeant Laura Robison, please come up. Come on up, Lieutenant. Lieutenant Andre Gomes, thank you very much. Again, just want to say thanks to the TPCA, Chief Burt, and thanks to the Dr. Inahosa, the Board Trustees, President Durant, for allowing us to do this, and we really are doing our best to make this the best police department in California.
We are very proud, and we want you guys to walk the horseshoes so everyone has an opportunity to congratulate you.
Yes, ma'am.
We're so proud of the work that you do because we do community policing. We work with students, and it's, it's different, you know, than working in another agency, and we're real proud of what you do. And just to be seventh out of all of the ISDs, there's only 1,100 ISDs in the state of Texas, so this is an amazing accomplishment. Congratulations, and I think with us tonight, we look like a family. Thank you, guys. [Inaudible] Look, I can do it like this. That's different.
All right, as the team is organizing to take this amazing picture, absolutely want to thank all of our officers, and I had to whisper to our female officers because I see the girl power in this. Absolutely. And so congratulations, and it is truly an honor, and I have to say to our community that's here today, you know our officers every day, day in and day out, taking care of our students and our community, so very extremely proud. Congratulations one more time.
Also, you mentioned the girl power. Today is actually National Policewoman's Day. [Laughter] There you go. On three, one, two, three. Hang on. There you go. One more. On three, one, two, three. One more.
[Inaudible]
All right, guys, right here, here we go. On one, two. All right, guys. Thank you. [Applause]
[Inaudible]
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 All right, guys, here we go. On three, one, two, and three. Hang on. All right, and one more. All right, here we go. On three, one, two, and three. There we go, guys. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
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 for the organization to support her fellow administrators both around the region and throughout the state. She previously, previously served as TEPSA's Region Board President, a role she was elected to back in 2020 when she was still an Assistant Principal, a rarity among TEPSA board members who are generally already working as campus principals at the time of their election. A 2015 Spring ISD Elementary Teacher of the Year and finalist for Region Board Teacher of the Year, Ms. Patterson, as many of you already know, also grew up in Spring ISD schools, attending Hersch Elementary, Twain Creeks Middle School, and Spring High School. She taught at Decane High School and at Anderson Elementary before becoming Anderson's Assistant Principal in 2017. In addition to her success here within Spring ISD, Ms. Patterson's contributions extend well beyond the district. TEPSA has more than six thousand members statewide who together help ensure a quality education for more than three million Texas schoolchildren. We're grateful for all that Ms. Patterson does to support students' success and the success of her fellow educators, and the district is proud to congratulate her on joining this year's TEPSA Board of Directors. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a big round of applause.
All right, good evening, everyone. We have a very special recognition we wanted to take an opportunity this evening. So as a school district, it's imperative that we work with all stakeholders to ensure our students have what they need to be successful, both in school and in life. It's our goal to educate children in a safe learning environment. Today, we are pleased to recognize an outstanding public servant who answered the call to serve our students and families by meeting their safety needs. The public servant is the one and only Commissioner of Harris County Precinct One Rodney Ellis. Many of you may be aware, but for years, we have collaborated with elected officials to address our safety concerns. You may recall a time when we did not have adequate sidewalks in our district for our students. Now, as you travel down Ella Boulevard, you will see that construction of a new sidewalk is near completion. Thanks to Commissioner Rodney Ellis, our students can now walk to and from school safely. Mr. Ellis was elected at the Harris County Commissioner of Precinct One in 2017. As county commissioner, he prioritized inclusive economic growth that uplifts our community, ensures access to parks, green spaces, and underserved neighborhoods, advances criminal justice reform that protects the rights of all people, and provides safe, affordable transportation options. Following Hurricane Harvey, his successful, he successfully advocated for equitable investment in flood control infrastructure and disaster recovery, vulnerable communities through a 2.5 billion bond that was approved by the voters in 2018. Commissioners Ellis Hertz for serving his community didn't begin as Harris County Commissioner. He was elected to the Houston City Council and served three terms before being elected to the Texas Senate in 1990, where he represented Texas 13th Senate District for 26 years and passed over 700 pieces of legislation that helped improve the quality of our lives. He has certainly helped our residents and our family. It is our absolute honor and privilege to present a Spring ISD Above and Beyond Call to Duty Award to Commissioner Rodney Ellis in gratitude for all he has done to support our district. I'm going to ask you if you could come forward, I'm going to ask my board to come back down into the horseshoe along with our leadership team.
Well, good evening. I, I just want to thank you all for this honor. I, I am so sorry I was late. We met in Commissioner's Court meeting today, so we were going through our budget, and you know, it's like making sausage. You know, I think it was when I, when, when I first started in, in politics, you might remember this name, Louis Welch was mayor. He just left, and I came in, Kathy Whitman was there, but he had a great line, he said, "The bad thing about trash is everybody wants to throw it down, but nobody wants to pick it up." And that's sort of like when you're trying to figure out how to spend money. Everybody has a bright idea on how to spend the money, but most of them want to take that heat, you got to vote to bring it in. So we started at 10:00 AM this morning, we took a one-hour lunch break to work on our various amendments and then went back in. So really, we left, and I was at home. You were kind enough, President Durant, when you called me, I answered the phone, and I was representing Mayor Turner. He couldn't go, so I was in Singapore for the Gas Tech Conference. It's not quite as large as the OTC Conference, Offshore Technology Conference, but it'll bring a lot of high industry people, oil and gas, clean energy people to Houston. I went with him when, when I first got elected, we went to Barcelona to make the case for them to bring the conference in Houston. And so now it's in Singapore, and he wanted me to go to make the case to try to get them to bring it back here every five years, because it helps our economy. So I went, and you called, I answered the phone, it was 2:00 AM in the morning over there, but it was, you wouldn't know, but it was 2:00 AM here. It was 2:00 AM here, and I was still on their time zone. So I got back Sunday night, and now I'm on their time zone instead of this time zone. So I've been up since 7:00 AM this morning, and my guy bringing me out here, I fell asleep, and then I woke up when I, when I left Singapore, which is a great place, I eased over to Bangkok, because I'd never been. Then I went to, to Taipei on the way back, like one day each place. So I got up early this morning, I woke up, I was scared to death, and I was saying, oh, they kidnapped me. Where am I? So I'm, I'm exhausted, but I'm glad to be here. I'm just so proud of those sidewalks, and we'll come and do a ribbon cutting. And when I came through, I was looking at them, and I was thinking, how great it is, and I saw some of these trails, I'm going to do a bike ride and get some of these kids to go riding with me, you know, because it's so important. Thank you, I appreciate what you all do. You've probably forgotten, my sister was on the school board in Houston, and it is such a difficult job, and particularly in this environment. So what you all do is so important. I know everything I am is because of my teachers, including my third-grade teacher, whose birthday was the same day, Dr. Alma Allen, who is now a member of the state legislature. And anytime she introduces me, she always says, as a teacher, you have to be thoughtful and careful on how you talk to kids, because you never know when your kids might end up being a son of a commission of council. So thank you all for what you do, and, and thanks to the parent family.
But Singapore was great, they sent me some photos. The Queen Energy is the future, you know, and so that's a well-spent time.
Next up, we're celebrating Spring ISD's fifth consecutive win of the District of Distinction Award from the Texas Art Education Association. At this time, I'd like to welcome Director of Performing and Visual Arts, Dr. Joe Clark, to share a little more about the award and what it means to our district.
All right, welcome home, thank you guys so much, this is an exciting night. So good evening, President Durant, members of the board, and Dr. Henoza. We are again here tonight to celebrate Spring ISD visual art program that was named a District of Distinction by the Texas Arts Education Association for the fifth consecutive year. I'll explain that just a little bit too. The District of Distinction Award recognizes districts that are committed to providing a well-rounded curriculum that includes strong visual art education around, across all schools and grade levels. Participating districts submit documentation showing their performance across various requirements. So there's a, a 14-point rubric that everybody checks off and have to meet every single thing, and it's very rigorous. So out of more than 1,200 districts, because it's a private also, there's a bunch of districts, so over 1,200 districts that are eligible for the 2023 award, only 68 met that requirement, so only 68 out of about 1,200 earned this A-plus rating for visual art. So now, after being named one of the award's inaugural recipients in 2019 and continue to win each year, Spring ISD is now one of only 16 districts, I need that fact too. No, one of the only 16 districts that have achieved the District of Distinction every single year. So we've won this five years in a row, every year that it's been available, and only 16 districts across the state have done this. This makes us the top 1.3% of all districts in Texas for visual art, so this is extremely exciting. So collectively, our group of 55 art teachers teach over 21,000 of our students every year, so we're very excited about that. But, and we have brought some teachers with us tonight, so we are, we invited our lead teachers here, and so we have them, if they can join us up here, our teachers. Come on up. I'd like to get them to join us up here. So on behalf of the visual art program, this is some of our master, master teachers that not only teach in Spring ISD, but also help teach teachers how to teach art. So big round of applause, congratulations.
Sorry, it's late and I get the limo eyes, so I'm like.
And if I can get the PBA team up here too, we have our team joined us, the PBA team, come on up.
All right, I get to be on this side, ooh, and the most important thing, I get to be on this side of the podium now. So last but not least, for tonight's recognition, we'd like to take a minute to recognize the award-winning efforts of our very own Spring ISD Communications Department. Tonight, we are celebrating with them for the 34 awards they received over the summer from the National School Public Relations Association as part of the 2023 National School Communication Awards Program, including 15 Top Awards of Excellence. These awards highlight work in education, communication, and marketing, covering print, electronic communications, video, graphic design, writing, website development, and social media campaigns. Chief Strubart and the entire communications team have stayed busy this past year, supporting our schools, both with the day-to-day communications as well as crisis communications, working with our local media outlets and making sure our community stays informed about the great opportunities available to students here in Spring ISD. They help keep the lines of communication open between the district and our stakeholders, and they work hard to ensure that Spring ISD remains as a trusted source of information for those in our community. These national awards are a testament to their unwavering dedication, exceptional talent, and tireless efforts in effectively communicating the remarkable stories and achievements of our students, staff, and family. We want to congratulate our Chief of Communications, Shane Strubart, our Assistant Superintendent of Communications, Sarah Butler, our Director of Communications, Kristen Cobb, and of course, the entire communications team. So join me in congratulating our communications team.
I do want to say that she's not here because I think she went with her visiting. So, but as you know, Rachel, Carol, she's been part of the public. And so.
I had to give my picture with so much.
I can't see, I can't see Ms. Correa. All right, I think I've got everybody there. We have three. One, two, three. Hold on. One, two, three. All right. One, two, three. There we go.
Why don't we take a quick five-minute, five-minute, five-minute break?
Good evening. We will now continue tonight's meeting. Our next item is agenda participation. This allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under agenda participation?
No, Madam President, not for agenda participation.
Thank you. In addition to that, we also have public participation. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up to speak during public participation?
Yes, Madam President, we have one speaker registered this evening. Before I invite our speaker to the podium, I do have a short paragraph to read. The board invites interested citizens to address the board on any subject that they desire other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any board member, staff member, citizen, or students of the district. The board provides an opportunity on the agenda for citizens to address the board, and we welcome your participation. The board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the board infringes on the guidelines stated previously or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, you will have three minutes to present. Mr. Sheffer will keep time, which will be displayed on the monitors. According to law, the board may not take action on any item that is not on the agenda. The board will not debate nor respond to any question during the meeting in order to research the question thoroughly before replying. The board will seriously consider the matter brought to its attention and respond appropriately. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal utterance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district, and we will hear you now. Our first speaker tonight is Debbie Townsend. Ms. Townsend, you may come to the podium. Can you give us just a second so that Mr. Sheffer can get that timer up on the screen? There we go. The share screen didn't want to work. We're ready to go.
Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Hinojosa, trustees, and cabinet. I really hate to do this. I hate to be Debbie Downer after all that good stuff that we just celebrated. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the environment at Spring High School. Breaks my heart to say this, but it's not good. I've volunteered at Spring High School since 1991. This year, the kids' behavior is appalling, and our new teachers can't believe what they observe every day. Yes, I spoke about my concerns to administration. Morning check-in at the front metal detectors, and in attendance was better today, but nothing changed at the two back check-ins. There's no consistency. Kids are out of dress code. They don't have their IDs. If they do, they refuse to wear them. Kids do whatever they want to because they know there aren't any consistent consequences. These kinds of things didn't happen under previous administrations. I'm at Spring every day. I've been at the front metal detector since August 2014. If you'd like, I can give you scenario after scenario after scenario. Things happening daily at Spring, but I'm going to be respectful of your time. So I'm available to list those scenarios to you at your convenience. I was at the gym board meeting when Mr. Durant point-blank said IDs and dress code would be enforced from day one. The Spring High School student IDs didn't arrive until midday on August 10th, unalphabetized or grouped by grade level. The freshmen have both their green IDs and their ZPass. Most of the 10th through 12th grade kids only have their ZPass. The rest have no current ID. The solution being used for no IDs is to use wristbands. So there, my question is, how do wristbands identify a kid as being enrolled at Spring? How do we know that we're not putting a wristband on somebody who's not really a student? We don't. The kids know there won't be any consequences for skipping, so they wander the halls, the same kids every day, back up as much as 15. The hall monitors want to put the kids in, caught skipping into ISS, but they don't have consistent backup from the admin. So the kids are just openly defiant. Dress code is not uniformly enforced. Last week, one AP's fixed for a dress code violation to a girl who was wearing a onesie was to have the girl tie her hoodie around her waist. This exposed her spaghetti straps. Onesies and spaghetti straps are both out of dress code. I know for a fact this kind of stuff didn't happen three years ago. How do I know? Because Ms. Melendez stepped up and told the girl in a onesie that she was out of dress code. Must go to the office and fix it. We need to do a dress code. I have some suggestions. We need to do a dress code and ID sweep. The kids out of dress code or not wearing an ID should be swept into an auditorium and their parents called to come get them. If mom or dad has to quit work to come get them, maybe they'll make them follow the rules. If kids don't want to wear two IDs, then make the ZPass and the color-coded ID the same, you know, two-sided. Schools should be a safe place, a place where students and staff feel safe. If we don't offer the path we're on, I'm afraid tragedy may be on our horizon. I don't want to serve the funeral ZPass of another.
Sorry, the timer's expired.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
We have no other speakers registered tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. Without, with the consent of my colleagues, I'd like to maybe make some changes to tonight's agenda. We have some guests that are present, and then we have a couple of closed session items. So I want to take what's in open and then go into closed. So we'll start and go through our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Westbrook's items, and then we'll give the board committee reports, then we'll go on closed session, and then we'll come back out to complete the rest of the agenda. Are there any objections to that change in tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I will now turn the meeting over to our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook's.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board, and Dr. Hinojosa. Our item this evening begins on page 23. As discussed on Thursday evening, the district received our certified property values from the Harris Central Appraisal District on August 29th. Upon receipt of our certified property values, at that time, we conduct our final calculation of the tax rate. And the tax rate is calculated, and our bills will be prepared as if Senate Bill 2 were in effect for tax year 2023. Senate Bill 2 includes additional tax compression as well as a homestead exemption of $100,000, which will be voted on at the November election. The initial proposed tax rate was posted in the Houston Chronicle on June 14th, and in conjunction with our budget hearing, a public hearing was conducted on June 27th. The rate that is being proposed to the board tonight is a total of $1,1092, which is a 14.5% decrease from the 2022 tax rate. The tax rate, as you'll recall, is broken into two components. One is the maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate, which supports our general fund budget, and the proposed tax rate, which is based upon our maximum compressed rate that is provided to us based on our taxable value increase, provided to us through the Texas Education Agency, along with the golden pennies that are, excuse me, the Tier 2 pennies that are added on top of that. Our maintenance and operations proposed rate is .6692. The INS, which is the interest in sinking portion of the tax rate, which supports our debt service payments, is proposed at .44, 44 cents. For that total proposed tax rate that we're bringing forward to you all this evening of 1.1092, and again, that is a 14.5 cent difference, decrease from the previous tax year.
Are there any questions for Ms. Westbrook's?
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook's. Just for people who might be watching this, could you ballpark what the tax bill would be for a typical Harris County, say $200,000 value or $100,000 value? Some people have some idea what this will mean to them. Hi, Andrew Mike.
A little over $1,100 for a home that is valued, the taxable value, is $100,000.
And when you say taxable value, you mean that there is a homestead exemption that is also increased or will increase when the voters say so?
Yes. So the net taxable value of your home, if that net taxable value is $100,000. So if your home is, market value is $200,000, with a new homestead exemption of $100,000, your net taxable value is $100,000, then you would have a tax bill of about $1,100.
Yeah, I want to emphasize that it's important that voters approve that homestead exemption. That hasn't already happened. The other question I have is sort of a refresher question. I recall that when we were talking to the community about the bond, we talked about what we thought our INS tax rate would be. I want to talk about how close we were to what we were estimating.
And so we're not quite there to what we anticipated that our tax rate increase would be. So this year, we are looking at a tax increase on the INS side from .4, 40 cents to 44 cents. And that's preparing us to pay that additional debt that comes along with the $850 million bond. So based on our projections right now, we should be able to hold that rate and hopefully not have to increase it anymore. So that would be 4 cents versus the higher, I think up to 7 cents that we were discussing during the bond process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Adams, for bringing all that to our attention and recollection. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees increase the property tax rate by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.10920, which is effectively a 4.64% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Adams that the board increase the property tax rate by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.10920, which is effectively a 4.64% increase in the tax rate. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Any additional items, Ms. Westbrook?
Oh, ma'am, that's it this evening. Thank you.
We will now move to our next agenda topic, which will be our ad hoc committee report. So we will start off first with our audit committee, and I'll ask Trustee Newhouse for that update.
I see I was already on.
Let me come back to you.
No, I think I'm ready here. For tonight's report, the audit committee, we just met yesterday evening. And in our meeting, we invited Mrs. Westbrook's and Dr. King to discuss with us action plans for HR rebuilding. The committee reviewed last year's accomplishments. We looked at current internet, internal audits and the internal auditor's update. As you know, when we ended the school year last year, we gave you a report of all of our findings for the end of the 2022-23 school year. So Mrs. Rios has started this year working on various committees, organizations, schools, and programs. So far, she has done the procurement P-cards, the distribution services, child nutrition, financial services, and transportation. She's done inventories with each one of these. And all of them, I must say, we need to give a shout out to and applaud for excellent process in handling all of the, in the audit for them. All of their records were all intact. So hats off to those committees. And I know it's a busy season for Ms. Rios, but we appreciate her continuing to reach out to these departments to do an internal audit for the board. She works as, under our discretion, to audit these departments, and she will continue to audit schools and other departments. So thank you, Ms. Rios. And again, we appreciate the efficiency of those departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Newhouse. I'll now turn the meeting over to our Board Governance Committee, a trustee, Dr. Deborah Jensen.
Greetings. The Governance Committee met August 21st and will be meeting again next week. And the objectives of our committee are to review and edit local policies, connect spring priorities to advocacy, and to celebrate Spring ISD employees. With that, we're looking at which policies we should be, that should be reviewed this year, also looking at governing ourselves as a Board of Trustees. We reviewed advocacy issues in the light of current public climate, including public school funding, some of the things that are going on in other districts, and safety. Our Employee Excellence Awards are going through a little bit of a change. We have attempted to do them monthly in the past, and after the pandemic, things just aren't coming in that way. So what we are going to be doing is three employees will get fall recognition, three will get winter, and three will get spring. So we still have the same number of employees being recognized, but we're going to be grouping them by season. The other thing is, we decided we're going to go like the Academy Awards, and that anybody who's nominated for these recognitions ought to know that. And so everybody will get a certificate of recognition. Another exciting thing that Trustee McDaniel brought up is to bring students into our governance process. Trustee McDaniel, would you like to describe what you have envisioned?
Sure. So what I envision is a student governance fellowship pilot, where we would bring in students. We know that our students have ideas. They have their own voice. They have their own interests. And cultivating a space where their voices can be heard, where they can bring forth issues that they feel are important and things they would like to see in the district. They are the ones who interact most with policy, and so they should also have voice in policymaking. So this will be an opportunity for them to work on just different projects, short-term projects, because we want to hold their interest and keep them captivated with what they're doing. doing. But just to include student representation in the work of what we do as the board, because they are the ones who we serve. And so we want to create just spaces for them to to do that work. So that's what the Student Governance Fellowship is about. We would start small and hopefully can build it into, you know, a really strong program. But this will be a pilot here, get some interest from some of our students. We know we have the, remind me the, I always forget. Yeah, the superintendent advisory committee. And so, you know, some of those students that are already involved, but also we want to spread out and get students who have not been as actively involved and tap them and get them even more engaged in what's going on with the district. So it is, and it's beginning phases, but that's something that we're really excited to pilot out this year.
Thank you, trustee McDaniel. Also, we have Winford Adams, trustee Adams on our committee. Thank you. Our chief counsel, Jeremy Binkley, and last but not least, our superintendent, who also assists with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Our next committee is our Board Equity Committee. And at this time, I'd ask trustee Winford Adams, Jr. to provide an update.
Thank you, President Durant. So due to a confluence of scheduling challenges, Board Equity has not met over the past month. So I do not have an update as such on Board Equity, but the equity work still continues. And I will bring to the front that a member of the community contacted me about the fact that the equity statement that I've been reading for the last few years is not, was not anywhere on our website. So I want to thank Dr. Nelson and her team for rectifying that. So when you go to our mission and vision page now at the bottom is the equity statement that we read before every board meeting. So everybody has access to that. And if any other equity committee members have anything to report, Equity Committee is trustee McDaniel, trustee Correa, Dr. Hosa, Councilor Binkley and Anne Westbrook.
Trustee Adams, may I bring up that we discussed a policy that got handed over to your Equity Committee?
Refresh me.
Okay, we can talk.
Okay.
Yeah, later.
So see, that's how the committees interact and collaborate together. They're actually passing work over to the other committee. Thank you, trustee Adams. I'll now like to recognize our Board Community Engagement Committee, trustee Kelly P. Hodges, to provide us an update.
I'll bring up your mic.
I'll just give a tidbit of what we've been doing and what we kind of talked about over the weekend during our, Mike, I think I got it. I'm a big girl. Thank you. I like him. He does a great job with making sure that I stay on task. Okay. So the Community Engagement Committee, I just wanted to remind everyone and particularly the community that we are, our goal is to partner with the district and key stakeholders to develop and implement opportunities to improve communication and awareness between the district parents and the community. And I think we can say that as a committee and as a board, we worked really hard when we launched the Community Engagement Committee last year to do this. And we're doing this by, we're activating this using community surveys, public forums, town hall meetings, workshops and special events. And we, as a committee, really, and as a board, want to thank all of the community members that participating in our, that participated in our building bridges and also our table talks and those that have come out to our anti, to the anti bullying workshop that we had, our college readiness resource fair and our family, our financial literacy and the safety forum. From the building bridges with the board, we had a really good turnout and we really appreciate everyone's support from from that event. And with that, we, that was a series of community outreach meetings that was facilitated by us. We went out into the community and what I really liked, and as we can see, our communications team winning all of these awards because they are really good about taking our message, our message and our vision and disseminating that information to the community. So they created great graphics that really showed the outcome from both of those meetings. So when you get a chance, if you haven't done so already, please go to the board on the Spring ISD website, under the board, we have a tab and you can see building bridges with the board and then also the graphic from our table talks that we launched as well. This will really give you an idea of what the focus was and some of the outcomes from those meetings. As we continue to move to good, move from good to great as a committee, one of the things we realize is that as a Community Engagement Committee, we really want to include the community. So we've decided to add three community members and also one principal from each feeder pattern, Westfield, DeCany and Spring. And then we're going to hold our host, facilitate three building bridges, one from each feeder pattern. And then we definitely want to be more engaged as a, as a committee in the Girls and Boys Summit. I'm sure Ms. Carol will be pleased to know that we want to be engaged and involved in that. And then we really want to hold more intentional community meetings. As I opened up earlier and talked about the value of our time as board members, the same goes for the community, the staff and all of our spring family. We want to make sure that we are having intentional, we're being intentional about the meetings that we're facilitating and the feedback that we get from you, making sure that we put that information back out so you can see we're meeting with a purpose. One of the things I used to say when I was president of a couple of my organizations, I don't meet just to meet and I don't like to meet and my colleagues will tell you that. I just, after two hours, you lose me. So I'm very, we're going to be very intentional about our meetings when we're in the community and making sure that we are respectful of everyone's time. And then also, we're going to continue to evaluate or start evaluating our work to make sure that the outreach and the information that we're gathering, that we can look at what's working and then also identify some areas of opportunity. So so far, this, in the fall 2023 activities, we had the Back to School Expo Saturday, July 29th. We had the Success Walk on September the 9th. And then we want to thank State Representative Symphonia Thompson, who came to Spring and hosted a town hall meeting where we talked a lot about some of the, it was really about the legislature and some of the things that's going on in the state legislature. And it was really good to have her come out and she also brought some individuals from major departments in the state of Texas to talk about things that are beneficial to our community. And I was very, very pleased at the attendance. We had, I know it was more than 100 folks in the room and it was the day after Labor Day, it was the day after holiday. So we really had really good attendance and she didn't come empty handed. She brought backpacks for the kids. So it was a really good event and we thank State Representative Symphonia Thompson for all of her hard work and for everything that she does in the Texas Legislature. And moving forward, we're going to host Building Bridges on October 30th. We're going to have table talks on Monday, December 4th. And we're also going to focus on voter education and voter registration this year. That would be it.
Great update. Great update.
May I add a comment to that?
Go ahead.
Representative Thompson's legislative meeting, I thought we were going to just hear about laws and I settled in and oh my goodness, I've never been to anything that wonderful for resources. I mean, they went through taxing where people could find out and sign up for their homestead exemption. People could go over and register to vote right there in the room. Some people who had trouble paying their energy bills, it turns out there's a huge fund to help people and they could go over and sign that. And the speakers only spoke for like five minutes at a time, it looks like. And then any of the questions that came up, it just, I love that they had the actual people in the room who could help the people. You know, it wasn't just talk about, oh, and you could go to this resource over there or there, you could do it right there. So that was awesome.
Very intentional meeting.
And I want to piggyback on that because you had someone there from Center Point, someone there from Reliance to answer questions. You had individuals there prepared to register folks to vote, to help them sign up for their homestead exemption. It was, it was just amazing and I'm hoping we have an opportunity to do it again and we want to thank Communications and FACE for helping to partner with our state representatives. Great update from all of our ad hoc committees. Excited about all the work and accomplishments we did last year and what we're looking forward to accomplishing this year. Are there any questions for any of the committees, for any other board members? All right. With that, I'll move to our next item, which is our consent agenda. And so now I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee McDaniel that we approve the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I know we talked about them all in detail on Thursday. All right. Not hearing any, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. So we are going to take our next couple of items in closed session, but then we will come out in open session for any action that we take on those items in an open meeting. At this time, I will now recess our open session and move, recess to open session and go into a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076 and 551.0821. Now voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in this open session and the time is now 8:30, 6 p.m. Good evening. We will now reconvene and, we will now reconvene and resume the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 10:44 p.m. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent of schools or designate to negotiate, execute and amend contracts for RFP 23-026, RFQ 23-021, RFQ 23-022, RFQ 23-023, RFQ 23-024 and RFQ 23-025.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent of schools or designate to negotiate and execute and amend contracts for RFPs number 23, 026 and RFQs number 23, 021, 022, 023, 024 and 025. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other items to address from closed session?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution to join the lawsuit regarding the accountability system.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution to join the lawsuit regarding the accountability system. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other items from closed session?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in closed session to employ Dr. Alejandro Gonzalez in the position of Assistant Superintendent in accordance with Board Policy DC Local.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee McDaniel that the Board has, that the Board approves the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in closed session to employ Alejandro Gonzalez in the position of Assistant Superintendent in accordance with Board Policy DC Local. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other items from closed session? Then the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene again in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071, .072, .074 and .076 and 551.0821. The voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes in open session. The time is now 10:48 p.m. The Board of Trustees will now reconvene this open session of the Board of Trustees on September, December 13th, 2023 and the time is now 12:20 a.m. Are there any items to address from the closed session? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Madam President, I move we adjourn.
It's moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Correa that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The meeting adjourns at 12:20 a.m. Thank you, everyone.